Which you can do, you know, the vacuuming, the washing, the... So he's doing that stuff. She talks a lot about the car place and that, I think, because she's had trouble with them in the past. Yes. Yeah. But it's that that she's really... Yeah. Yep. You're right, though, she's referring to the wrong thing. And I told her that on the phone. She's referring to the car lot.
This meeting of the City Council will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Delasola. Sorry, I gotta get my pen to work. Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel Handlin.
Here.
Counsel Mangan.
Here.
Counsel Mark Casey.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel Apolitano.
Here.
Counsel Sacheta.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Capone.
Here.
Nine members present, Mr. President.
Nine members present. You have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
Yello.
A flag for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, if we could please remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost two very special people in the city recently. One is Stella DePerry, was the mother of former Alderman Chuck DePerry. She was a lifelong Everett resident. She proudly raised her family here in Everett. She was a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother. She lived to a ripe age of 95 years, and she was a very sweet woman. Another individual is a former colleague of ours, Gil Delasola, uncle of Counselor Richard Delasola. Gil was a true gentleman, a solid family man, companion and friend. He was a youth sports coach. He served on a common council and the Board of Aldermen with integrity. He served as a mentor to many local elected officials. He served on the school building commission. He always put the people of Everett first. He's just an honorable and decent man. Both Stella and Gil will be greatly missed, so we could just stay risen here for a few moments. I appreciate that. Clerk will read the first item of business.
First orders, business to public hearing in order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to all persons interested. The petition for auto repair mechanical license for Ali Hanadi DBA Continental Car Care, 142 Ferry Street. Mr. President, due to this being canceled on Monday, the petitioner needs to re-advertise. So it is my recommendation that we refer this to our next meeting.
The Chair will accept the motion to refer this to the next meeting?
This move, Mr. President?
Second. It's been moved and second to refer item number one to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. You've referred item number one to our next meeting. Item number two.
Item number two is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to conduct a 10-minute public participation period.
Second.
Moved and second to open public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. You have open public participation.
I...
Do we have anyone?
I don't have anybody on the sign-in sheet, so I make a motion to close public participation.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion, if we could at least give... Because again, a lot of our people that come up for public participation are not aware of the sign-in sheet. I think it's appropriate that we give everybody who comes up at least an opportunity.
Absolutely. Good point. Would you all entertain a mo... Is anyone in the audience wish to say anything at the public participation portion of the meeting? Seeing none, we've got a motion before us to close and second, close public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have closed public participation. Before the clerk reads item number three, I have to apologize. Counselor Leo McKinnon is unable to attend this meeting tonight due to a previously planned family obligation, and obviously Counselor Richard Delasola is at his uncle's wake. Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby promote the following City of Everett Police Department personnel. Paul Landry to Captain, Christopher Hannan to Sergeant, Richard DiTropano to Sergeant, and Neil Burke to Lieutenant.
Fable action on the order?
It's been moved and second to fable action. Clerk call the roll.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Mark Casey.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon, Counsel Apolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have confirmed. Okay. Is there a second on that?
There is.
Very good. It's been moved and second to have the individual sworn in. You're going to start with?
Captain.
Could we please start with Captain Landry?
Is it right there? For me, I, Paul Landry.
I, Paul Landry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a captain in the Everett Police Department.
As a captain in the Everett Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding?
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules?
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations?
Regulations.
Laws?
Laws.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
And charter of the City of Everett.
And charter of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
And will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America?
To the United States of America.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. After me, I, Neil Burke.
I, Neil Burke.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant in the Everett Police Department?
As a lieutenant in the Everett Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding?
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules?
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations?
Regulations.
Laws?
Laws.
Ordinances and charter?
Ordinances and charter.
Of the City of Everett?
Of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution?
And will support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
Bear true faith and allegiance.
The United States of America?
The United States of America.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
Bear true faith and allegiance.
The United States of America?
The United States of America.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Okay. If we could please have Sergeant Hannan and Sergeant DiTropano before us, please?
Is it right hand? Is it after me? I do solemnly swear? That I will faithfully and impartially? Discharge and perform? All the duties incumbent upon me? As a sergeant in the Everett Police Department? According to the best of my abilities and understanding? Agreeably to the rules? Regulations? Laws? Ordinances and charter? Of the City of Everett? So help me God. I do solemnly swear? That I will bear true faith and allegiance? To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? Will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth? So help me God. I do solemnly swear? That I will bear true faith and allegiance? To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? Will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth? So help me God. I do solemnly swear? That I will bear true faith and allegiance? The United States of America? The United States of America. Will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. So help me God.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess to allow the individuals and family members to take some photos if they'd like?
I promised to say hi to my Aunt Diane from Georgia.
Did you want me to cross out and just sign here?
Mike, he signed down below. Did he?
Yes. I'm going to cross it out and sign again.
Who did?
Yes, he did. He signed.
Oh, I got one, Richard.
You got three Richards. One, two, three. Yep, so you want me to just cross it?
No, that's okay. And you hear that's yours?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm fine.
Okay. I'll make copies and give them to the chief. No problem. Peter, thank you very much.
Sergeant?
Captain.
Come on.
How you doing?
Wait a minute. Oh, the lawyers, just worry on this side.
It's a wide lens.
No, no.
I have to call.
You must listen.
I'm going to tell you a dead guy. I know your mother very well.
Congratulations, guys. You have a form of service and congratulations. You guys all look, appreciate you and stand job. You got to thank you.
If any of the family members want to come up and take photos, feel free to. If any of the family members want to come up and take photos, feel free to. If any of the family members want to come up and take photos, feel free to. If we could please remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost two very special people in the city recently. One is Stella DePerry, was the mother of former Alderman Chuck DePerry. She was a lifelong Everett resident. She proudly raised her family here in Everett. She was a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother. She lived to a ripe age of 95 years, and she was a very sweet woman. Another individual is a former colleague of ours, Gil Delasola, uncle of Counselor Richard Delasola. Gil was a true gentleman, a solid family man, companion and friend. He was a youth sports coach. He served on a common council and the Board of Aldermen with integrity. He served as a mentor to many local elected officials. He served on the school building commission. He always put the people of Everett first. He's just an honorable and decent man. Both Stella and Gil will be greatly missed, so we could just stay risen here for a few moments. I appreciate that. Thank you. Clerk will read the first item of business.
First orders, business to public hearing in order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to all persons interested. The petition for auto repair mechanical license for Ali Hanadi DBA Continental Car Care, 142 Ferry Street. Mr. President, due to this being canceled on Monday, the petitioner needs to re-advertise. So it is my recommendation that we refer this to our next meeting.
The Chair will accept the motion to refer this to the next meeting?
This move, Mr. President?
Second. It's been moved and second to refer item number one to our next meeting. All in favor? All opposed? You have referred item number one to our next meeting. Item number two.
Item number two is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to conduct a 10-minute public participation period.
Moved and second to open public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? You have opened public participation. Do we have anyone?
I don't have anybody on the sign-in sheet, so I make a motion to close public participation. Thank you, Counsel.
The Chair will read the first item of business. This is a public hearing in order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to all persons interested. The petition for fraud and teller license for Debbie Green DBA Psychic Boutique at 1936 Revere Beach Parkway.
Is everything in order? Yes, it is.
Can I make a motion to take?
Counsel Mark Casey?
Take, yeah, but take four to nine?
No, no.
We're on four, okay. Okay. Move for fable action. All the papers are in order?
I second that motion.
Moved and second to fable action, item number four. Clerk will call the roll.
Ms. Chairman, on the motion?
Counsel Handlin.
I'm not going to be in favor of this because I've never believed in this kind of business anywhere in the world because those things are not possible. So I just want to make that known and the reason why I'm going to be voting the way I'm going to vote.
Thank you, Counsel. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item number five, second-class motor dealer license from Thomas Corviello, DBA Eastern Seals, 1934 Revere Beach Parkway. Item number seven is petition for third-class motor dealer license from Steve Strogoff, DBA Second Street, iron and metal, 285 Second Street. Item number eight is petition for a second-class motor dealer license from Stephen Gugliano, DBA Empire Auto Sales, 7 Beecham Street. And number nine, petition for second-class motor dealer license from James Almasoni, DBA Malden Auto of Everett at 87 Broadway.
It's been moved and second to fable action. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Mark Casey.
Yes.
Counsel Apolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have granted the petitions. Clerk will read item number 10.
Number six.
Oh, six. I'm sorry.
Item number six, petition for second-class motor dealer license from new owners Paulo de Lima, Junior Carlos DiCavalo, DBA Everett Used Cars at 70 Chelsea Street.
Counsel...
Has this been to committee yet?
It has not.
No. So the motion here would be to send to?
License.
License?
Yep.
Motion made to send the license?
It's been moved and second to refer item number six to licenses, community business development. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have referred it to committee. Clerk will now read item number 10. Thank you, Counselors.
Item number 10, Plating Board reported in ordinance further amending the zoning ordinance at the City of Everett by changing the zoning district designation from apartment to business district at 1739 Revere Beach Parkway with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Clerk, I believe it would be to refer this to you for public hearing. Would that be the proper motion?
Yes.
Would you all entertain a motion to?
And accept the communication? Accept the communication and place on file?
It's been moved and second to accept the communication and refer this item to the City Clerk to schedule a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read item number 11.
Item number 11, resolution sponsored by Counsel Sani and Counsel Rosa DeFlorio, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Report to request the owner of the Gateway Travis Center appear relatives to procuring private traffic details on weekends and holidays. Would recommend date to refer the matter to the mayor and direct to community development to determine if the mall can add a secondary exit onto Route 16 near the Michael store.
Counsel DeFlorio.
As you well know, we're getting a lot of complaints in the mall, one way in, one way out, and so we're trying to make this a safety issue more than anything, more than convenience. So basically, we've had the people up, they've tried, they've gotten, they have gotten detail works. The maintenance people have been very, very good over there. So what we recommended in committee is to give it to the mayor and the community development to see if they can come up with a different idea because we don't have the experience or the ability to do that. So in regards to that, I would like to send this item to the mayor's office in community development.
Second.
And with an answer back, I mean, this isn't something that can be done right away. So I would say a month, in March, and if, and if they don't have enough, if they need more time at that point, then we can just refer it to further along. So thank you.
Okay. So it's been moved and second to refer this item to the mayor's office and community development with a request for a response within a month. Is that correct, Counsel?
Yes.
It's been moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have referred this item to the mayor's office and community development. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 12.
Item number 12, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Report to Chief of Police appear at next meeting to explain the camera grants that we receive that are out there now in place and as the sound devices for caliber of weapons if they were to be shot off in the City of Everett. Chief manage to explain grants in fact that we did gather with recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor. All in favor? Counsel Handlin.
It says that, I think it was the board, he explained it, but I think he explained it to the committee.
Okay.
And I would like to, I'm not opposed of it, but I would like to get that explanation sent to go to the committee.
Okay. Sure.
Well, just send us a copy.
Okay. I'm sure that we can get that from our clerk. The motion on the floor is to refer this back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have referred item number 12 back to sponsor.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 17, please.
Second.
Moved and second to suspend the rules and take item number 17 from the calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? Clerk will read item number 17.
Item number 17 is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, present to Community and Business Development Committee Report on petition for second-class motor dealer license from Christopher DiLorenzo, DBA 380 Auto Finder, 380 Second Street with a recommendation for fable action.
If everything is in order?
Yes, restrictions Monday through Saturday, 9 to 7, no Sundays.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the committee report and favorably on the petition. All those in, oh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Mark Casey.
Yes.
Counsel Apolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have granted the petitions. Clerk will read item number 13.
Item number 13 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Apolitano, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Report that the Director of City Services appear at the next committee meeting to provide a description of plans to repair effective or damaged capital improvements that occurred within the last two years with a recommendation that each member of the City Council of Power list of capital improvement repairs refer to the mayor and direct to city services with a further request that the administration commence their sidewalk, city sidewalk, citywide walk around in the spring.
Accept the communication, place on file, and I'd like to refer this to the mayor's office.
Second motion?
It's been moved and second.
On the motion, Ms. Chairman?
Counsel Handlin.
It's just that I would like to add to that, at the very end of it, and that the City Council also be invited to attend if they would like to go.
We are anyway. We are anyway. We always are.
It doesn't sound like it there, so I'm just asking that to make it clear.
Is there a second on the amendment?
No, the second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. So if I have it correctly, we're going to refer this to the mayor and the Director of City Services?
Correct.
With a request that the City Council be...
And with an answer back, I mean, this isn't something that can be done right away. So, I would say a month in March, and if, and if they don't have enough, if they need more time at that point, then we can just refer it to further along.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to refer this item to the mayor's office and community development with a request for a response within a month. Is that correct, Counsel? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have referred this item to the mayor's office and community development. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 12.
Item number 12, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Liam McKinnon, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Report. Chief of Police appear at next meeting to explain the camera grants that we receive that are out there now in place, and these are the sound devices for caliber of weapons if they were to be shot off in the city of Everett. Chief managing to explain grants in fact, and we did gather with recommendation, refer back to sponsor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor. All in favor? Counsel Hanlon.
It says that, I think we're the boys, he explained it, but I think he explained it to the committee.
Okay.
And I would like to, I'm not opposed of it, but I would like to get that explanation sent to go to the noncommittee.
Sure.
Communication, communication.
Okay, I'm sure that we can get that from our clerk. The motion on the floor is to refer this back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have referred item number 12 back to sponsor.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 17, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number 17 from the calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have. Clerk will read item number 17.
Item number 17 is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, President of Community Business Development Committee Report on petition for second-class model deal license from Christopher Di Lorenzo, DBA 380 Auto Finder, 380 Second Street, with a recommendation for favorable action.
If everything is in order?
Yes, restrictions Monday through Saturday, 9 to 7, no Sundays.
Fable act, favorable action on the order.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the committee report and favorably on the petition. All those in, oh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi.
Yes.
Counsel Palitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sachata.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have granted the petition. Clerk will read, I believe we're at item number 13.
Item number 13 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter DePalitano, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Report, that the director of city services appear at the next committee, meaning to provide a description of planned repair, effective or damaged capital improvements occurred within the last two years, with a recommendation that each member of the City Council capalis the capital improvement repairs referred to the mayor and director of city services with a further request that the administration commence their sidewalk, city sidewalk, citywide walk around in the spring.
Accept the communication, place on file, and I'd like to refer this to the mayor's office.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
On the motion, Ms. Chairman.
Counsel Hanlon.
It's just that I would like to add to that, at the very end of it, and that the City Council also be invited to attend if they would like to go.
We are anyway. We are anyway. We always are.
It doesn't sound like it there, so I'm just asking that to make it clear.
Is there a second on the amendment?
No, the second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So, if I have it correctly, we're gonna refer this to the mayor and the director of city services with a request that the City Council be invited to attend as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have so referred. Clerk will read next item of business, item number 14.
Item number 14 is an order sponsored by Counsel.
Counsel Hanlon.
Items 14, I'm sorry, 14, 15, and 16, in the meeting we discussed them rather than read them all, and we know that the state is involved in making some new laws regarding this, and I think that on items 14, 15, and 16, we should make a motion that these be referred, remain in committee until such time as the state has delivered to us their recommendations on these three types of businesses.
Second.
I believe, from the chair, if I may, I believe that 14 and 16 could remain in committee, but that 15 would not be, I don't think there's any state action going on on 15. I might be wrong.
That's true.
Okay.
It's 14 and 16.
So, we could, I guess the.
Mr. President, do we take 14 and 16 collectively, leave them in committee at this time?
Clerk, read them. Second motion on that?
A second on 14 and 16 collectively.
They're moved and seconded to take 14 and 16 collectively and leave them in committee until such time as the state takes action. Have you read those?
Oh, please.
Have you read those?
Yeah.
You did read them?
Oh, no. 14 is Community Business Development Committee Report on ordinance regulating the licensure of tax or cabs in the city of Everett. 16 is an ordinance regulating and establishing limousine delivery licenses in the city of Everett.
Excuse me, before we vote on this, my question. Do we have the committee reports on these meetings?
Yes.
We should have them before we vote on.
Right, we're leaving these in committee.
Okay, and how about number 15, do they have?
15 is remaining in committee. It's granting further time on number 15.
Okay, I just wanted to be able to read something. Because I just have an issue on something, I don't know if they're gonna do it, but I know we got in the cab, I think we put a piece on one time that $8 is supposed to be the maximum. It's not being, and second of all, we've always increased the cab fares when the gas went up. Gas is down substantially, maybe there should be a 25 percent decrease in the fees, that, you know, I mean, that we work with them to get it up there. When it's coming down, I think we should, you know, give the people that same break on the taxi fares.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to leave items 14 and 16 in committee pending further action by the state. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have so referred. Then we're left with item 15.
Item number 15 is Community and Business Development Report on an ordinance regulating establishing junk collector licenses in the city of Everett, would request for further time.
Make a motion, request further time. Second.
Moved and seconded, accept the committee report and grant further time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you've granted further time. Clerk will read the next item of business, I believe it's 18.
Item number 18 is resolution sponsored by Counsel Richard Del Sol and Counsel Leo McKinnon to get an update on the progress of the bathrooms being done over at the rec center.
Refer back to sponsor. I'll lay it on the table.
Yeah, the chair would entertain a motion.
Either one of them, yes, or the next meeting, Mr. President.
Yeah, I believe that would be the proper motion. Lay it on the table till the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have laid number 18 over until our next meeting. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 19.
Item number 19 is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, President to amend the revised ordinance of the city of Everett Chapter 18, Section 149(c), citywide resident sticker regulations by deleting, there shall be no fee for resident parking stickers issued during the 30-day distribution period. The fee for a resident sticker issued after the initial distribution period shall be $10, replace that language with, there shall be no fee for resident parking stickers. Was enrolled in the last meeting, referred to this meeting for ordainment.
Fable action on the order.
Second.
Moved and seconded for ordainment. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi.
Yes.
Counsel Palitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sachata.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eight yays, one nay, Mr. President.
Eight yays, one nay, you have ordained. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 20.
Item number 20 is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, the rules of the City Council hereby amended as follows, the end of Rule 42, Section 8, adding the following sentence, if necessary, the president's attendance at a committee meeting can be utilized to establish and or maintain a quorum.
Second motion.
Moved and seconded favorable action. Clerk call the roll.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi.
Yes.
Counsel Palitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sachata.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have accepted the rule. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 21.
Item number 21, resolution sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio and Cynthia Sani, to present to Comcast to come and explain the increase on the Comcast bill.
Make a motion to refer it to Committee of Government and Operations.
Second.
And inviting Comcast representative.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to refer item number 21 to the Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service, and to invite a representative from Comcast. Can I get that correct, Counselor?
Yes.
There a second on that?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, you have referred, yeah, hear that one more time, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, you have referred item number 21. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 22.
Item number 22 is resolution sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio and Cynthia Sani, to represent it from the administration, to invite to the next government operation, public safety, public service meeting to explain why we can't get Verizon to do business in the city of Everett.
Mr. President, I know we have a communication from the mayor, but I don't know what the process is with the, does this automatically have to be sent, or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
No.
So, could you read the communication, please?
Sure, we could have the clerk read the communication.
This is from Stan Yucovitch, Regional Director of Verizon Government Affairs, Mayor Di Maria, thank you once again for your inquiry into the possible deployment of Verizon files in the city of Everett. Ryan is taking a pause on our files expansion order focused upon meeting all our current contractual obligations and building out the files network in communities where we are currently licensed. Those local franchise agreements are provisioned upon offering files to the entire community within a stated period. We are, however, pleased that communities such as Everett have expressed strong support for files television. We have continued to express your interest in establishing cable completion within the city to Verizon on many occasions. I'm sorry, you have continued to express your interest. In addition, you have expressed your willingness to negotiate a local cable franchise agreement with Verizon at any time. Verizon, appreciate your comments, we look forward to working with your office perhaps at some time in the future. Once again, thank you for your interest in this matter.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, everybody's complaining about their cable bill, and if you have cable and internet, and unfortunately, sometimes you have to have it. You have kids, they have to do homework, you have to have internet, and it's very high, and I think we should have some competition. So, this is why I would like to see Verizon come in, because I think if you have more than one company in the city, then the ability is that your bill would go down when there's competition. So, now, as far as this letter goes, I don't know if the mayor's gonna be working with Verizon. Are they looking into working with Verizon? I mean, could I have?
The way I see it is that Verizon appreciates our interest, but right now, they're taking a hold.
They're gonna hold, so they're not interested right now, so.
If.
They have contractual, it looks to me like they have contractual agreements that they have to fulfill first.
Right. Okay, so then, right now, I'm gonna make a motion to refer this back to sponsor.
Second.
Counsel Sachata.
Yeah, we discussed both these, item number 21 and 22, at the Board of Alderman meetings a couple of times. We had Comcast before us, we had Verizon before us. Comcast has given, we've given them a 10-year contract, I think there's about three years left on it, so they give us no satisfaction because they have the contract another three or four years, I forget how many more. And Verizon came out and said, right here on the podium, it's too costly for us to come into the city of Everett, and that's why we're not coming in. And that's what was brought about last year and the year before at the Board of Alderman meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of interest.
Counsel Hanlon.
That contract is up on the first week of 2016, January 2, 6, 1016.
Counsel DeFlorio.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what's upsetting is with the Comcast is that, you know, the little boxes were $1.99, they went up to $2.99. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to do here is to let them understand, just because we're in a contract, they just can't get away, we're doing what they're doing. They never notified anybody. You know, you got a $1.99 on your bill, then all of a sudden, you got a $2.99 bill, they should tell you a month ahead of time, because if I choose not to have that box, I choose to send it back, then I shouldn't be paying $2.99. So, I feel that Comcast needs to come in front of us and start answering some questions. So, thank you.
Counsel Sachata.
Once again, I want to say that we had them up there on that $2.99 charge for the remote, and the man says, you don't have to rent it for us, you could buy it somewhere else, and this is the answers they give us, so I don't think we're gonna go anywhere with it. We're stuck with it, but again, if you want to have them before us, they're gonna say the same thing. Thank you.
What did you want to do, Counsel, because I think there was a motion, refer back to sponsor, would you prefer to do something else?
No, by number 22, on the, on 21, it's going to Committee of Government and Operations.
Right.
On number 22, I made a motion to refer it back to sponsor.
It's been moved and seconded, refer item number 22 back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you've referred item 22 back to.
Mr. Forrester, will you adjourn?
Counsel.
I'd like to make a public announcement, a snow, the snow shoveling, they got a number that the people can call if they're stuck through, is it through the mayor's office? The number, are people, they need someone to shovel them in, or if they're sickly, I don't know, if there's a number.
Would you like to have Melissa come before us?
Yeah, please.
Motion, Mr. President, to have Ms. Rodriguez in front of us.
Second motion.
Moved and seconded to have Ms. Rodriguez in front of us, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have, Counsel, thank you, Melissa.
Melissa Rodriguez, Mayor Di Maria, Chief of Staff, if it's an emergency, they should call 911, obviously, but I'd like to make sure I announce that first, because I don't want anyone calling us. If you are elderly or disabled and you need help shoveling, we do, we have had some work crews and volunteers out there. You can call the mayor's office at 617-394-2270. You can also reach us through the city website, www.cityofeverett.com, and through Facebook as well, which has actually been a big thing, and through C Click Fix. But the mayor's office number is 617-394-2270. If we're not in the office, leave a message, we are checking them throughout the day, even if we're not here on the weekends, so.
Is that on ECTV?
Our number is on ECTV, yes.
Okay, I mean, this is a crazy, crazy, snow, snow we're having here, I just want to make sure that people have something they can call if they get stuck, like I got stuck.
Happy to help, as much as we can.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Sani.
I just had a question, and I know this is not on the agenda or anything, are we gonna be setting up a number like the other, like Boston and some of will have, like a 311 call or anything like that, because I know some people say the city's closed on Fridays and they can't reach anyone, and they're reaching, you know, some of them reach us, but there's a few people that don't know our numbers or anything.
The 311 program is actually very expensive, it's something we've been looking into for years, it's over a million dollars to implement. So, if they do find themselves in a situation, certainly call our office, because we are checking the voicemail all day, and city services is open on Fridays, and I, off the top of my head, don't know the number there. But yes, they should continue to call us in, you know, in an emergency situation, or even in a situation where they need an ISD inspector, they can call 911 on the business line, 617-387-1212, for the police station, and they will be able to get in touch with an ISD inspector, if that's what they're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion.
Excuse, customary thanks, thank you. Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have adjourned.